Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the June 8, 2011, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Williams has the dog today.
Okay, today we have a puggle from the kennel, part beagle, part pug, very loving dog here. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give the mic over to our dog warden, Jack, and let him tell you about the dog and what's going on at the kennel.
This little girl was found around Randall Avenue in Lorraine, and she's got a real distinct personality. She's really calm, she likes to have her belly rubbed and everything else, and as Commissioner said, she's a pug and a beagle mix. Those are some time ago, probably, you know, a few years ago, they said they start creating these designer dogs. But this one's kinda unique in itself because I just love the face because the under jaw just goes underneath, it just makes that dog just that more cute. You just, you know, I was surprised to see that nobody was looking for this dog because we've had a dog for about, since early last week. So anyway, this is our Dog of the Week today, and please come on down to our kennel because I tell ya, you got a lot of nice dogs down there and you can't beat the price, and you can't beat the facilities that we have, and what we perform as far as spaying, neutering, and everything else. Thank you for your time, have a good day. Thank you.
At 9:45 we'll have the final assessment hearing to clean and improve from State Route 301 to Webster Road, the Hastings Ditch, and LaGrange Township. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, requisitions, I'm sorry. Actually, I'd like to have the Engineers' Office come up for a moment, I have a question regarding the camera system for tile base.
Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know a lot of other local communities are looking for these type of cameras, and right now they have to rent the equipment, it costs them about $1,000.
That's why we've been renting it a lot with all the rains we've had.
Okay.
So we thought it would be appropriate to purchase it, and we'll make it available to townships to assist them as they request, so.
Thank you so much, you answered my question.
Yeah, we've actually been talking about that, actually with the issue with Griswold Road, I'd like to thank the Engineers' Office, Alariah Township, that's where we found one of our problems with the flooding of panties and its transmission.
Right, and the camera, I mean, you can run a jet rod through, but, you know, you get a pipe like that, and you open up a hole like that, and the next storm, you're flooded again, so it's worth its weight in gold to get that camera, so we look forward to receiving it.
But all the townships will be able to use it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, good deal. I have a question too. The one for the CBCF, for the concrete walkways, was back on the requisitions, and I see that Mr. Cortez said he had a call-in to Mike Willetts regarding this issue, and then I had a response from Teresa Upton and Susan from Purchasing, and I didn't know if you had a conversation with him or just a call into him?
I did, I believe we attached some information with regard to their position on the bid that Mr. Willetts had his folks provide, did you see that?
No.
I mean, if I recall, it said that they were working with the first bidder, and they lost contact, and they have repeatedly called the bidder to finish the paperwork and get the work underway, and have not been able to get them to do so, and so in order to get the work done, they had to move to the second bid. I thought it was attached to...
The one from Susan from Purchasing?
No.
No?
I thought it was attached to the requisition when it went back into the file. At least, that was the instruction I provided, so maybe it's in there in...
Very back of the requisitions? Oh, that, I didn't see that. So they're willing to pay double for the project because they can't get a hold of the first bidder? Is that what you're saying?
I want to give you a moment to see what they wrote. I didn't say whether I agree with it or not, I just said I provided the information.
They put it in big, bold print, so that's good, I can read it.
You brought my glass?
No, I got it.
Okay.
Okay. If the guy doesn't want to cooperate, then I guess we can't give him the bid, right?
Well, you know, sometimes when the initial proposer isn't able to fulfill the role, you move on to the next bidder, it's unfortunate. He may have found out after the other bids were put in that his bid was substantially lower and he wasn't able to complete the job, we just don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, the explanation on the original requisition wasn't, didn't explain that very well, so, okay, I'm okay with it then.
Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Engineer one question off-topic.
Sure.
On the parking garage, I'm not sure if you're aware, we have another engineering firm to come in.
I saw that on the agenda last week, I was into that, but...
Right, a lot of people, a lot of the taxpayers are wondering why we have to use an outside company and engineers can't do it. I've talked to different people, I kinda know the answer, I was wondering if you could explain it?
Yeah, I mean, everyone has certain expertise, and, you know, that firm that you hired, Barbara Hoffman, I believe, has a lot of expertise in structural type of building construction. The Engineers' Office, you know, we don't get too much involved in structural parking decks, building construction, so it's really not our expertise. I mean, we certainly have structural engineers that could look at it, but it's really not down our alley, so I think in certain cases, you go to the people that, that's their expertise, and I think that's what you did, and I think it's...
You don't have the equipment to go through and do destructive testing?
No, we don't, we'd have to contract all that out, and probably at the end of the day, it would probably cost more in the end, so...
Okay, well, thank you, and Mr. Cortez on that, as well, the fee for the $30,000 that was going towards the evaluation of the garage?
Correct.
Is that going to be rolled into, with the cost of the garage itself, to do the work?
We held the $30,000 fee, that wasn't approved, so it's not gonna be rolled into anything, we just won't do that assessment in the garage right now.
No, that's not what he's asking, I don't think.
Are you talking about the $38,500 for the engineering?
Right.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, we had a 30 on the...
Right.
Okay, absolutely, all the costs will be recaptured if the Board decides to move forward, remembering, we don't have any real substantive knowledge of what the cost may be with the garage.
Right.
And once everything is prepared and is presented with the options to the Board, if you decide to go forward, we can roll that into a bond and recapture it if the Board decides to do the work.
And if it becomes too costly to repair it, we just tear it down, right?
Well, you know, I mean, there's gonna be options.
Serious parking issues.
Right. I mean, with this, the type of testing that they're gonna come in to do the evaluation, it's gonna be time, a lot of time invested, a lot of man-hours.
Correct.
And it's not something that we could normally just have someone come in and give us a free estimate on.
No, I mean, we know the garage has problems, and we know it has structural issues. It's not gonna fall down, but the concrete is very old, we're talking about a structure that was built in 1972, so approaching 40 years old, and it's exposed to the elements, and the salt comes in on the vehicles, and we've had spalling corrosion, and some of the re-bob has been exposed, and that's had corrosion in it. We've tried many solutions that have given us temporary results with regard to the deck, but there has to be some destructive testing, some bore testing, and some non-destructive testing to continue to sample the structural integrity of the concrete. Sometimes there's problems you don't see.
Right.
The ones anybody can see are obvious, but also you have to engineer a solution to those things. Anybody can get down to Home Cheepo and grab a bag of concrete and spread it around, but that's really not a suitable repair, so it's not that easy. We need a structural engineer to come in and offer remedies, and design remedies that we can bid out for the proper repair. The last time they had to re-bob a whole bunch of the joints and then put new joints in, what they did is they re-bobbed the cross, and they had like a floating membrane that they put between sections of the garage to limit the water coming in, which was actually infiltrating the concrete, which was causing it to deteriorate at a more rapid pace. And then they put a membrane down over the top, almost like a concrete roofing system, but the membrane now is seven or eight years old, and that's deteriorated and started taking on water and it's infiltrating the concrete. So you can see there's a lot of multiple issues.
Right, a lot of engineering work going into it, and again, I just wanted to let everyone know that we're actually going to be taking that money, and it's gonna go towards the repair if we decide to have these...
No, I don't, I think you're asking, the same people that Barbara Hoffman is doing engineering work is not going to be the people that are going to be doing the work on the building, or on the parking deck, is that what you're asking? That that money that we're spending for engineering?
No, 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 the money is going to be rolled into the...
The loan?
The loan and everything.
Oh, okay.
It'll be recaptured as a complete package should the Board decide to proceed.
Right.
Now, obviously, if you find it too costly, or you decide not to move forward with the recommendations and hold them for a while, that money will just be invested in the engineering, into the project, and in such time when the Board makes a decision to go forward, we'll recapture it at that point.
Right.
But if we wait too long, then we would have to do engineering again?
Some of it, not all of it, but some of it, again, a lot of the remedies can be prepared. One of the reasons Barbara Hoffman was the lowest proposal after the RFQs, is they have familiarity with the parking deck because they've done work there before, so they had a distinct advantage on cost when it came to doing that, because they have been the prior engineering firm that worked with us on that.
It is quarter till if we want to go to the...
Anything further on the requisitions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Now, would you like to do the...
Now, yes.
Yes.
This is the final hearing on a petition request by LaGrange Township to clean and improve the Hastings Ditch from State Route 301 to Webster Road. Resolution 11-167 on March 16th accepted petition received on February 25th and scheduled viewing on April 11th at 10:00 a.m. in accordance with Ohio Advice Code Section 613107. Notice was in the Chronicle on March 28th and April 4th, and notices were sent to 17 property owners on March 21st. Construction improvement is necessary and will conducive to the public welfare. The following is course and term, and I have said proposed improvement to wit, commencing at a point on east side of State Route 301 approximately 460 feet north of Webster Road on the north property line of 40956 Webster Road. Thence continue easterly along the existing ditch to be cleaned approximately 3,740 feet to the end on the north side of Webster Road at culvert number 0582, also being southeast corner 40330 Webster Road. All cost of engineering, construction, and future maintenance will be assessed to the benefit of property owners. Following is nature of the work petition for improving the ditch from State Route 301 to Webster Road being approximately 3,740 feet called Hastings Ditch. The trees and brush will be cleared in and along the sides of the ditch as needed to allow appropriate flow. 20-foot wide each side, grass access path for ditch improvements and maintenance will be allowed to LaGrange Township and maintained by LaGrange Township. Good faith effort will be used to save trees as requested by owner if not obstruct the flow. Silt buildup will be removed from the channel to restore the ditch bottom to its original grade. April 11th, the viewing took place, and there were discussions on the exceptions of Plaga and Langford. April 26th was the hearing, and there were no objections, so the township will maintain the ditch. April 26th, Resolution 11-257 granted the petition, and Resolution 11-258 requests county engineers submit plans by May 3rd and set the final hearing for today. Engineers submitted estimated cost in the amount of $24,305. April 27th, county engineers sent letter to ODNR for the review. May 5th, all owners were notified of their assessments and notice in the Chronicle telegram, which is initial improvement assessments equals $100 per parcel, and assessment per year equals $30. Quarter trustees of LaGrange will be assessed 75% and Penfield 25% of balance. Clerk has received no claims for compensation or damages. Amount to be expended for said project is under the threshold, therefore will not be bid through a contract the township under force account. And June 29th will be the 21st day if any appeals are received.
Jerry, would you like to swear anyone in who would wish to give testimony this morning?
If anybody's gonna testify, would you please stand and just whine? Do each of you, if there's anybody wants to make in the audience that's gonna make any comments, each of you swear or affirm the testimony you shall give shall be the truth, as you shall answer under God or under penalty of the law of perjury.
Jerry, you're representing the Township trustees, would you like to come up and say anything?
Gary Burnett, LaGrange Township trustee, not a lot to say today, except we're moving forward, we've had no complaints, hopefully there's none today, and we've been waiting a long time to get this done, and hopefully it'll move on today and we can help out our constituents. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Good project, Gary, real good project.
It is, thank you.
Bill, Wayne, anyone from the Engineers' Office to make comments?
No other comments, unless someone asks questions.
Anyone from Soil and Water?
No.
Any residents have any comments?
He wasn't sworn in.
Yeah?
You need to be sworn in.
You didn't stand to get sworn in, sir.
Huh?
You didn't stand to get sworn in.
No, I swear me in.
Okay, Jerry, can you swear me in?
You swear or affirm the statement?
Yeah, right.
Shall be the truth, as you answer under God or under penalty of the law of perjury.
Yes, my problem is...
I need your name and address, sir.
We need your name and address.
Yeah, I got one. Mike Honasowski, 40330 Webster Road, I'm the last one on the list, my name, my address is on it, at Directions. My thing is the $100 I gotta put down on it, and the $30 every year. I don't know where they come up with this, but I know one thing, the $30 will increase over a period of years, it's inevitable, everything else does, and why do I have to pay it?
Well, it's the continued maintenance, I can turn this to the Engineers' Office or the Township, but what happens if there becomes an excess of funds based on the cleanup actually, the assessment will be lowered, correct, Gary? Is that how the Township's going to handle it?
Yeah.
In our past discussions?
What happens, Mr. Honasowski, is this is by petition. We're actually doing a very unusual thing in that the vast majority of this expense is really being incurred by the Township. Normally, this would be assessed to all the, the entire project would be assessed to the entire landowners, because some work that was done in other portions of the Township, and they're doing it to help clean their roads too, the Townships are undergoing, you know, the vast majority of this expense, and $100 is far lower than usual. Yes, as far as the future maintenance, you know, we have said that at $30, it could be lowered if...
You're gonna, you're gonna charge these people that didn't sign the petition this too?
We are charging everybody that is adjacent to the...
No? Okay, all right, then. No other residents, no other comments on this? Jerry, should I move to close the public hearing and then make the motion?
Yeah, I would just like to explain that, if I could, a little bit more, yeah. This was a project that, you know, the Township came up with a very innovative way to try and accomplish this, since the county ditch funds are no longer there. The Township came up with this concept that they would take care of most of the expense, so what we anticipate to do is contracting over to the Township, they will do the work in-house, and, you know, we believe we're accomplishing this project at, you know, a very inexpensive manner, and the cost to the individual residents is going to be far lower than it would be in almost any other type of project. And the only thing that's really being incurred by the landowners is the cost of maintenance so that the work that is done in clearing this and cleaning this isn't, isn't lost. You know, all the land, I think there's, is this the one where the one landowner did something to his...
Right, with the shoes.
There's one landowner that did some self-fix, so...
Right.
But that's where it is.
Maybe for the Engineers' Office, or if you know it, Jerry, how often are they gonna maintain the property? Is it just as needed, or is it on a preventative maintenance schedule?
Well, on our ditches that we have under maintenance, we attempt to cut the ditches at least, our goal is twice a year, but sometimes we only get once, depending on weather conditions, like this year, we may only achieve once because the early spring has been so wet we can't even get off the road. But we at least mow them once, but on this ditch, the Township is gonna do the maintenance on it, and so I don't know what their goal is, I assume they probably would try to mow it twice as well, and that's our goal, I mean, sometimes we get it twice, sometimes we don't, but, and then as we deplete the fund, if we don't use the fund up, then like Jerry says, it'll drop off a maintenance until, you know, we use it up, and then we'll put it back on, and it builds up, and it's kinda on and off depending on how much money's in the fund.
Yeah.
So in this ditch, the Township has agreed to do the maintenance.
Any more questions?
No.
Motion to approve to close the public hearing?
Second?
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Okay, Jerry, now do you, I'll make the motion to approve, and then you'll give us an explanation?
Okay, what you're basically doing is making a motion to reaffirm your prior determination. That prior determination was that this improvement will be conducive to the public welfare, and the costs will be less than the benefits, that the improvement is necessary, and you're going to then move, as part of this resolution, approve the assessment and maintenance schedule, and that will be, we are not assessing maintenance the first year, so the maintenance will be going on the second year, the assessment will be payable in the first year, and then directing the engineer to go forth, if this were over $25,000, we would have to direct him to go forth with bidding or whatever, but since it's under $25,000, as he indicated, we're gonna do this with contract through, with the Township, so direct the engineer to go forth with entering into a contract with the Township to do the improvement.
So moved.
Second?
Anything further? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, back to...
Approve and waive the reading in the state in the County Commissioners' Meeting minutes of June 1st, 2011?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Madam Clerk, you missed, oh, okay, you went back up to nine.
Oh, yeah, I guess I...
Yeah, you missed nine.
Authorize various actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of the County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla, I do have potential new hire at the Collection Center I'd like to discuss with the Board, our ongoing labor discussions with regard to consolidation of services at the E911 Center, and I don't think that any of those will take too long, but as you know, I have to leave at 10 o'clock to make it out to Mercy to have a talk with their infectious disease control folks with regard to some county services, but I will be back to meet with the Board. So I would request at the end of, at the conclusion of the regular Board meeting, or when I get back, that we go into executive session to discuss those issues which are allowable under the sunshine law. Thank you.
Authorize Commissioners to be petitioner on behalf of Carlisle Township to implement the process of vacating Hanaway Street right-of-way south of Carlisle Avenue.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Is this the one that we had in our packet?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll start the process and we'll move forward.
What about the other part that you said was not...
Vacated.
That's all part of it.
Vacated? It's all together?
I'll send it to the Engineers, and they'll send me a letter of review back.
Okay.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development War Contract to Backs Roofing and Construction Plymouth in the amount of, this should be $8,118, that includes a contingency for Horona Wade Swiger at 44059 London Eastern Road Huntington for roof replacement. 29 bids were sent, three received, this being most responsive complying with specifications, and will be paid from the CDVG home repair account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
War Contract to Lucas Plumbing and Heating, Lorraine, in the amount of $654, that includes a contingency for Sally Sagert at 447 Cross Avenue Amherst for emergency water heat replacements. 14 invitations were sent to receive, this being most responsive, and will be paid from the chip home repair account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Transit Amendment Resolution 1111333 adopted in May 25th to transfer 2001 Eldorado Aerotech, number 320, mileage 272,249 to the veteran. Said amendment is to reflect this vehicle's being transferred to Lorraine County Health Inc., care of Todd Rowley, President, will be used for the transportation of homeless vets.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer War Contract to High Touch Company Lexington, the amount of $99,561.70 for the new London Eastern Road culvert 0108 replacement Rochester Township. Seven bids were received on May 26th, this being most responsive complying with specifications. Estimate was $115,000, will be paid 89% OPWC, 11% local. Issue notice to proceed on September 15th and complete by October 28th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advertising notice for annual chip and seal program, notice being in the Chronicle on June 10th and 17th, open at 2:30 on June 24th. The estimate is $349,615 to be paid from the MVGT account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister?
No additional comments, just one, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I do have one matter pending litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session, should be very brief.
Commissioners' report.[1693.16]
I'm just curious, Mr. Romancic, has, did Mrs. Plato come up regarding her issues with the electric?
Yes.
She did? Is, did it get resolved?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, good. That's, that's the end of my report.
Yeah, been a rough week for rain. I'd like to thank engineer, county engineer Carney and his staff, Bill Holtzman, Wayne Milette, and the folks from Liria Township who showed up and said we're going to resolve some of the flooding issues on Griswold Road. That's the end of my report.
Tom?
No report.
No report. Just a note, September twenty-third has been designated from ten to one-fifteen at Lorraine County Transportation Community Center to three-hour mandatory records certification. And you have to register at the State of Ohio.
And your associations coming in and, right?
Not specifically.
Oh.
I mean, we are having a bunch of clerks come in, but not the whole group, but yes.
Oh, I thought the whole group was coming. You've had them before, you've hosted them before, right?
Yes. And board correspondents?
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Cal.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin, I wanted, I was going to ask the question about that meeting on open meetings, the training for open meetings, who will all attend from the county?
Depends on who signs up, but it's.
I can't quite.
It's for every elected official and or designee within the county or surrounding counties or whomever wants to come.
Surrounding counties, this is for any official in the whole county, like some Oberlin council people could go, or the city manager could go.
Yes, I did send an email to all elected officials in the county as well as all the townships, villages and cities.
Good. I'm wondering if any of the commissioners have ever attended one of these meetings?
Five, six years ago when I first got in office, I attended the open meetings.
Okay.
I believe I have too. Because I think it's important for, for public officials to do that, not just their designees. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? David? Get some color on those lights, David.
Just glad they're not standing in water. David Ashenhurst, Oberlin, just two things that are on, on tap for the future, really. One is Juneteenth in Oberlin, which actually starts with an event this Sunday, and then is the seventeenth and eighteenth, which I realize you'll have another meeting, but it won't be on TV again, so please come for things in Oberlin. Last year, the theme was eighteen sixty Oberlin on the eve of war, and this year it's eighteen sixty-one and the war came, which is a line from Lincoln's Second inaugural address and a very powerful thing if you ever have a chance to read it. The other thing I wanted to ask was, are any of you planning to go to the NOAACA summit on Friday?
Of course, David, I'm on the executive board.
Okay, so you're going, I hope, I would encourage anybody to go, and NOAACA for people who are watching at home is the Northeast Ohio area-wide coordinating agency and is where all the transportation dollars come through and a whole lot of other infrastructure money, so I hope that stormwater management is somewhere on their agenda as well as air quality and some other things that relate to transportation but aren't exactly transportation. As you know, it's the, it's called, it's one of the nation's MPOs, which is a metropolitan planning organization and just has a lot of responsibility governmentally for a lot of planning that goes on, so.
So it's a big, it's a big thing. I'm actually, tomorrow I'm in Columbus for the state association and I won't be at meetings on Friday for state association because I have to be in Cleveland for the summit, so.
Okay, well.
It's a busy week coming up, so I'll report on it next week.
And I was just saying it again because sometimes you say where you're going to go and I just, I'm glad you are, and it just hadn't come up and nobody had said it, so I wanted to get in. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Make a motion to move into executive session as outlined by our county prosecutor?
Second.
Ms. Cal.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' general meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the administration building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Liria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh-three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen-ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen-twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh-seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh-seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen-seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen-ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen-thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen-eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's waterwell. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen-ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen-thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen-twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen-eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen-fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskiville, today the intersection of Roots fifty-eight and one-thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen-thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen-seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh-nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen-seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen-fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen-eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen-seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen-fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen-twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen-twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen-sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen-seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in eighteen-sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen-seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Liria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen-sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen-twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen-forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Liria and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen-seventeen, Artemus Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen-twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Liria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation and in the winter of eighteen-seventeen moved from New York State to the one-hundred-and-sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen-twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen-eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace and in fact was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen-seventy to nineteen-hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, The Spirit of Seventy-Six. In eighteen-eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen-twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen-twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen-eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen-twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen-thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen-ninety-two, as new Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen-twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen-eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen-twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen-twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen-twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on post and not the office. As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen-twenty, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen-twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen-thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen-twelve. By eighteen-twenty, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen-twenty-one. By eighteen-thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LaGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen-twenty-five established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen-twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name LaGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen-twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LaGrange. By eighteen-seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LaGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcox, who built the first frame house in eighteen-thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen-thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen-thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen-thirty- When the first post office was established in eighteen-thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen-fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen-ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen-thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen-thirty-five, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen-thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen-eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester's center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
How about a little trash talk about Lorraine County Solid Waste Collection Center in Liria? The Collection Center makes it easy for Lorraine County residents with ID to get rid of stuff you don't want going into a landfill. Stuff like hazardous waste, acids, household bleach, oven cleaners, antifreeze, paint, herbicides. Take it to the Collection Center. It's a drive-thru, so it's easy to get rid of scrap tires, even if they're on the rims. The Collection Center also takes e-scrap, like computers and monitors, circuit boards, microwave ovens, smoke detectors, even household TVs up to twenty-seven inches. No console models, fluorescent lights and ballasts, reference materials and books, fire extinguishers, all kinds of stuff. Drive-through, drop-off, just don't bring curbside recyclables, explosives, medical waste, radioactive materials. For what's accepted and not accepted, visit lorainecounty.us/solidwaste. The Collection Center near Big Lots at five-forty South Abbey Road in Liria is a service of the Lorraine County Solid Waste District, the Department of the Lorraine County Commissioners.
Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving thirteen counties, secure and safe Ohio rideshare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. One-eight-hundred-eight-two-five-ride, or register online at ohio rideshare.com. Point, click, ride.
Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Liria.